Welcome and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Monday, February 5, 2024. Welcome to all of you, both here in the audience as well as those joining us via Zoom tonight. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella?
Here.
Member Pearson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
Whalen?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in honor of our servicemen and women serving this great nation, both at home and abroad, and a special moment of silence for those service members who lost their lives or were injured in the Middle East this past week, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Nation's Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, and it is indeed a pleasure tonight, as we turn to the proclamation and presentation section of this evening's agenda, to have a proclamation issued by the City Council declaring February 2024 as Black History Month. And I'd ask that the Harrison Prep Black Student Union representatives and students present join the Deputy Mayor and myself at the podium to receive the proclamation. So come on up. Then when we're done, just so you know not to leave, we'll get a big picture out in front with all of us here.
Andrea?
Yes.
Mary?
Good to see you. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. In honor of Black History Month, it is my pleasure to read this proclamation. And it reads, "And whereas Black History Month is celebrated throughout the United States of America during the month of February, and then the 2024 Black History Month theme is art as a platform for social justice. And whereas this theme highlights how Black and African-American population have resisted historic and ongoing oppressions over the centuries and advocated for the right to be treated and seen as equal. And whereas by resisting, Black Americans have achieved profits, triumphs, successes, and progress, as seen in the end chattel slavery, dismantling of the Jim and Jane co-segregation in the South, increased political representation at all levels of government, desegregation of educational institutions, the passage of the Civil Rights Act in 1964, the ongoing of the opening of the Smithsonian National Museum of African-American History in Washington, D.C., and increased and diverse representation of Black experience in media. And whereas all Americans are reminded that our nation recognizes that all people are created equal and should be judged not by the color of their skin but by the content of their character. And whereas this observance afford the opportunity to reflect upon the journey and contributions of Black Americans and to honor the many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas since 2019, the city of Lakewood has celebrated local and national Black leaders throughout its Hidden Hero Campaign, which showcases individuals making a difference in their communities. And this year's theme incorporates the voice of the Black Student Union members in Lakewood and who share why it is important for them to see Black leaders in their career fields and professions. And whereas there still exists the need to strengthen the insight of all our residents regarding the issue of human rights and to eliminate discrimination toward minor minority groups. And whereas young people are encouraged to prepare to assume leadership roles to work toward the achievement of freedom, justice, and equality. And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to the idea of free society and is a community of great cultural diversity, which it values and celebrates, and is dedicated to the fraternity and the community of all people. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim February Black History Month in the city of Lakewood and urge all residents to join us in the observance by learning about our local hidden heroes through reading their stories that will be shared on the city of Lakewood's website and watching the video that will air on the city's social media. Proclaim this fifth day of February 2024. Signed, Jason Whalen, Mayor."
So I would like to... I guess who's going to receive? And you are all welcome to have a few words.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Holly, and this is just such an honor to be here. I'm so proud of these ladies behind me, and this has definitely been a dream of mine to be here representing not just a school, but the community that I grew up in. I'm from here. I breathe Lakewood. I live Lakewood, and I am Lakewood. So just thank you so much for allowing us to be here.
Thank you.
I'll go up and get a photograph, and then councilmembers, come on down. Well, thank you for coming tonight. It's great to see all of you, and thank you for helping us celebrate Black History Month. And thank you, Deputy Mayor, for fabulous presentation. You were a hero presented and featured last year, not a hidden hero. You were a very visible hero. So we appreciate all that you do for our community. Okay, next, we have the Youth Council Report, and the Youth Council members who are present, come on up.
I'm going to join my colleagues here and to present. We had an amazing, on February 27th, we had a Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board-sponsored Partnering for Progress workshop. And in that, it was basically the purpose was to bring adults and youth-facing adults into the same room. And so we could take what we've been hearing from our students for a while now and all the many methods that we've been talking to them and asking them what they want and really kind of put actions behind our words and figure out how we, as a community, can work to help them to reach those things that they've told us they need in a community. And we also, we did this in partnership with Clover Park School District. So what they did is they went into the schools and they also surveyed the teachers and the staff and asked them, "What do you need from us? What do you need from the community as our support staff to help you support our students?" Because at the end of the day, our teachers are amazing, but they can't do it all. And I think sometimes the community forgets that they are our educators and they are there to educate our students, and they have their own needs. And so we were able to have that information, like I said, Clover Park School District, Ron Banner was at the event, Grant Twiman and Amari, and they gave this incredible presentation. They led roundtable discussions. We had probably about 45 individuals there. We kept it small in the planning this time. Like I said, we wanted to really focus on youth-facing adults. We had a lot of nonprofits in the room. So like I said, we had about 45 people that participated, 12 of which were students. We had five of our Youth Council members, two of which are here tonight to kind of talk about what the students had talked about what they need. And then the rest were the adults in the room, and the dialogue was amazing. I think we all kind of came away feeling Christopher was there as our emcee, Mary was there. I think we all came away with a clearer path of what we, as a community, need to do in order to not only just listen to our youth, but to know where we're going to go forward, to prove to them that we hear them and that we're going to put actions on paper and go. So I'd like to introduce, my first one is Bridgette. I'll let her give you her name, and she's going to kind of talk about the first need that the youth came up with, which should be no surprise.
So I am Bridgette, and I'm going to be talking about the youth mental health that we talked, because we talked about that. We talked about how we wanted self-care practices to include methods for dealing with depression and anxiety, as well as training for school staff to attend to their own mental health, as well as helping diffuse situations as a student out first, for example, mental health and first aid trainings. We also wanted to know who in the community is trained on mental health and first aid? Maybe a common symbol that is easily to identify for students, or students, parents, and the community. Mental health, I'm sorry.
You're good.
You're doing great. We just got to have you come a little closer to the mic so we can hear you.
Is this better?
Thanks, Bridgette. Yeah, it's better. Thank you.
I'm just going to start from the also.
You're good.
You're so good. We also wanted to talk about, we also wanted to know who in the community is trained on mental health and first aid? Maybe in the common symbol that's easily identified by students, parents, and the community, mental health tactics that include safe spaces. We want more regularly scheduled youth events, like late nights at the YMCA. We want more opportunities for peer-to-peer fun.
Right. Caitlin?
Thank you, Bridgette.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Miller, and our second topic is workforce development. We want more mentorships, internships, and job shadows. Also, we want to know what professional job opportunities are available for our youth, either it's in Pierce County or King County. And also, we want to visit more colleges in state and out of state and to include historically back colleges and universities to make sure there's multiple options of colleges available for everyone. Also, we wanted more resources on how to prepare for adulthood. And four topics that we have chosen were research building, I mean, we, sorry. Resume building, interview skills, budgeting, and finance. And at the end of the day, we still want to be youth, but also learn these life skills through trusted adults.
And that, that, and that, I mean, that's just, like I said, it should be no surprise. They've been telling us that for many, many years. I mean, I've been with these individuals for three years, and the message has been the same. And so what we discussed in there is, we've heard it now as a community, how can we really get involved? And so what we've talked about is, we need, you know, a lot of individuals, not just our students, they don't know the available resources that we have. And so some of the ideas we came up with was, let's do a resource map. Somehow, we need to have some collective where all of these individuals are service providers. You know, they've got people coming at them with different needs that maybe they don't house, but they might know somebody who does, and so they can refer. And we thought, maybe we come up with this resource map that has a common symbol that is displayed in languages and communication methods that reflect our community, you know, because I send them emails, but I also, then I have to remember, shoot, I should text them because I need to let them know I sent them an email, because our youth don't do email. They don't do email. And so we just, we were really trying to work on that. I think it's going to begin, we have a community collaboration group that is looking to get involved in our community. So we've already kind of tuned, I've tuned them up that we have this, we've already discussed with them that we really kind of want to put a resource map together. Christopher and his boss and I have talked about maybe his involvement in that and in his duties, working, he's already come to, you know, he's been coming to my Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meetings, my community collaboration meeting, so he's set to go to work with us if, you know, if that's what is determined that he will do. But we really kind of want to get the community collaboration built up. So that's one method of getting out there what we want to do to address these concerns. You know, again, we want more volunteers, you know, these late nights that they're talking about, they want more regularly scheduled events. They're all coming out of COVID. We, as adults, know how that negatively impacted us, but our youth grew up in it. And so they're just really trying to still gain, you know, how to become that social person and, you know, get out from beneath their phone, right, behind their phones. So we're really wanting to look for ways to meet them. I know Chris has come forward with a couple of really good opportunities that we presented tonight. So that's where we're going with this. Like I said, it's our turn as a community to put action to words to serve our youth. And the workforce development side, my promise is to get individuals in community. And we discussed tonight as a Youth Council that for the next, the meetings going forward, that we want to bring one department from the city into our meeting and dedicate a part of the agenda to them learning how, you know, what do we do? How do you get there? What's the education? And so, you know, we're all, we all kind of came out of that room thinking, how can we, in our daily jobs, contribute to what was discussed today? And then we do have a steering committee, and so I and the colleagues on the steering committee will be re-meeting. And then we hope that this is the first of many, where we can bring other sectors of the community in, like the police department, to also buy into our community plan of how we can best serve our youth and our youth-serving adults. Right? And send them off to college or wherever it is, in hopes that they come back, and they are our city leaders, and they're me, and they're Mary. So that's, we had a really good meeting, and I'm looking forward to future meetings.
Sounds fabulous. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for you. You know, we've long talked about the need to figure out the youth mental health service provision issue, and there are a lot of providers. Sometimes it's a resource. My question is really focused on the career opportunities, mentorship, education, about what's out there possibly for Career Pass. And my question would be, and this is great to have Mr. Thomas here as a member of the Clover Park School Board, what opportunities presently exist in the system that expose the students to career opportunities, Career Pass, Career Days, those kinds of things? Because I remember a few years back where I was invited to speak for a Career Day at Clover Park, and I was happy to do so. So if there are existing opportunities, let's figure out how we can best meet those needs. If there aren't existing opportunities, we, as a leadership group, would probably want to know why.
Yeah.
If they aren't present in the school district, and if they are but have gaps to fill, then those are the things that we'd like to look at.
Yes, and that's exactly, that's what we discussed in the room, and that's what we want to look, come away from is.
Yeah.
What do we all do now? What's available now? What's working? And where are those gaps that we need to fill? And it doesn't have to be these insurmountable, you know, changes in organization. It may be little tweaks, and they can be simple things. They don't have to be big. We can start with simple things.
Absolutely.
The solution is endless.
Yep.
Yeah, and manifold, so.
No, it'd be great. I would love to receive some specific requests or recommendations for action that we can look at once you have a chance to kind of help figure out what it currently exists. Because if there could be more career opportunities at a late night, for instance, for those kids who, you know, they have the kids that love to play basketball or do other sport activities. Maybe there's some kids that want to hear about what it means to be an engineer or what it means to be involved in city government or those kinds of things. And that, that could be a great opportunity to work with the why and the district which has funded late night, and perhaps we can look at that as well.
Yeah, I feel like you're in that room because that was something that actually was something, we had, we had a list of big ideas, and I'm still in the midst of, I have them all in bullet point, but we have this big ideas list, and it was pretty comprehensive, and that's one of the things, like at the youth late nights or these events, let's offer those adulting skills while still remembering our youth want to have fun. They don't, we don't want them to grow up too quickly, right? So we still need to find fun opportunities for them.
Well, we're here to help, so.
Yeah.
Let's continue the conversation. Thank you both for coming. I'll see if there are any other questions of councilmembers. Councilmember Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you for coming tonight and giving us a recap of what sounds like was a worthwhile event, being able to go and do that. I guess I had a question, though, about frequency, maybe. How much time are you willing to give the community before you will have a report card to tell us how we're doing in response to your requests? And if you could come up with some sort of a schedule or a format to do that, I could, whether it would be six months from now or something like that, so that we would get, that we don't end up with a lot of excitement about an event of what we might do, but that there needs to be some sort of a report card or something that comes back to say, well, what did you get started or do? And if you would think about how you would look to do that, I think the community would benefit from having a report card.
Yeah, well, and was that question directed at the students or me, or both? Me, or just kind of where we are in this process now that we've started with the workshops?
I'm more interested in the youth coming together at some defined time in the future, depending how patient they are with us, how much time they want to give us, and make some progress on their ideas. But tell us, tell us how we're doing, where we're doing well, and maybe where we're not making progress or haven't heard correctly.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can definitely work on that, for sure. I mean, yeah, we'll work on that. I'll bring that back to them for discussion.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Well, again, we really appreciate your work. I hope you're having a good time on the Youth Council, kind of noodling through these issues.
Yeah, I love it.
I hope they provide pizza or something for you as well. It's good.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yep. So dovetailing on that, Mr. Thomas, Clover Park School District Vice President of the Board is here to present.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council. It's been a while since I've been in this chamber, so it's kind of nice to be back. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to share just a little bit about what the Clover Park School District is doing. As you are aware, in January, we had three new members elected to the school board. With that, Alyssa Anderson Pearson was re-elected as president of the school board for another term. And some of the things we are working on now, besides getting the new members up to speed on what their responsibilities are, obviously, we have the replacement educational program and operation levy that will be on the special ballot on February the 13th. So we are obviously looking at that. And then the board has set some goals aside for 2024. Some of those are overlapping from last year, which the board was not able to get to at that time. But we identified seven goals that we will be working on for 2024. Student growth and achievement, and I can let you know, as the Youth Council was talking, I was writing feverishly information to take back to share with the board. So student growth and achievement, parent and community engagement, communication with stakeholders, supportive learning environment for students, obviously, staff retention, recruitment, and professional development. We have several positions that are open within the district that are both, you know, we have bus driver positions, we have counseling positions. So we're really taking a look at recruitment, staff development, and retention, and of course, physical responsibilities. So those are the goals that we have put on the table to work for, work with during the 2024 year. Obviously, we are also partnering with the city for Black History Month. Throughout the month of February, the district is partnering with the city of Lakewood's MLK Committee to produce and send out a weekly e-newsletter to recognize district and local Black heroes. Deputy Mayor Moss, obviously, was one of those that were highlighted in that. Other things also that we are working on is the February is Career and Technical Education Month. CTE provides important pathways to success for students, offers them opportunities to personalize their education based on their career interest and unique learning needs. And of course, we are proud, as a district, that we have a very robust curriculum in both the middle and high school, high schools on career and technical education. Lots of things going on in the district that I'm sure you're aware. Gravulate K-12 Academy awarded 22 diplomas at its winter ceremony. 22 students earned their high school diplomas through its Open Door Youth and Reengagement Program this winter. Staff was very proud to have those graduates receive their diplomas. And that's kind of a brief. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Board Member Thomas. Any questions of council? Well, thank you. You obviously you heard some good feedback from the students.
Very good feedback. I was writing real fast, trying to keep up with everything. I can tell the youth council that some of those things we have heard at recent board meetings that we are looking into specifically, mental health and those things that are very important to us. And we are addressing those and looking at ways of how we can partner to bring that to the forefront.
That's great, we appreciate that. Let us know how we can help. Okay, well, thank you very much. That concludes the proclamation presentation section of tonight's agenda. We now turn to the public comment section of the evening's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment, provided they relate to matters pertaining to city business. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Rihanna Schumacher at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting are provided to the city council electronically to ensure that we have a full and transparent record. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, the city received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Members of the audience may comment again on items pertaining to city business during the public comment period. Your comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those of you who are here in the audience who have signed up, or if you haven't signed up but still wish to provide comments, you're welcome to do so. We just ask you, come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, provide your name and city of residence for the record, and then proceed with your comment. There are lights on the dais that will tell you when you're nearing the end of your three-minute timeframe. Virtual comments are also authorized, again, if they pertain to matters relating to city business. You can attend virtually by joining the Zoom meeting as an attendee, by calling the telephone number, I believe, which is on the screen, 253-215-8782, entering the meeting ID number, 868-7263-2373. And then please use the raise the hand feature so that we know who to call on in which order. And again, the city clerk will unmute you. You'll be given your time to speak. Please again, identify yourself for the record and proceed. So what I usually do is call on those in reverse order. If you're in person, we'll do that the first week. And then the following week, we'll call on those in Zoom first and then followed by the in-person folks. Tonight is an in-person first, followed by those on Zoom. And the public comment sign-in sheet first up is Ken Tokash. And again, if you haven't signed in, that's just fine. You're more than welcome to come on up, just queue up to the, the dais there and state your name and residence for the record.
Thanks for letting me speak. I have two things. One on Washington Boulevard. You're planting all these trees that are great, but you're planting some of them right under the wires. So in 10 years, you got to hack them off instead of eliminating that tree and make it where it's not under the wires or use that tree for somewhere else, another project in Lakewood. Cause we paid for them and you can just hold on to them in a maintenance yard. And then another one is those rotten roundabouts. On the inside curb, like Stillicum University Place, they have it painted where you can see the, the edge. And it would be nice to get the maintenance crew or whoever does the stripes, just, you know, put a yellow stripe around the inside, because so many people in like tonight coming here with the rain, it was hard to see and I almost go up on the, on that little lip thing. So it gives you a heart attack, so. And that's it. But yeah, I'd like to have the trees, you know, so they don't get butchered in 10 years. It'd be nice. So you can always use them somewhere else. Yeah, so that's it.
Thank you, sir. Just real quick, your name and.
Oh, yeah, it's Kenneth Tokach.
Here in Lakewood.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else here in person would like to address council? Feel free to queue on up. If not, I will turn to those who are going to provide comment virtually. Just looking around the room, making sure, okay. I'll go to those who have signed in to provide virtual comment. First is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. When I listen to the education people that have spoken to you for many, many, many years, it's always disappointing when I don't hear enough about the measurable progress of, of first, second, third, fourth, fifth graders up to eighth graders. So how they're performing on math, English and arithmetic. Math is absolutely essential for holding together a civilized society. And when, when, when students graduate and don't have math, they don't have the ability to measure and balance and project what might, might happen after certain behaviors. I see something happening now that is going to bring, it's very likely to bring more crime to your community. As you know, 25 governors have sent their, their governors and help to Texas to stop the border crossings there, the illegal ones. Well, that pushes the, that's beginning to push and it's showing, pushing them over towards California. Then when you get to California, it's the I-5 corridor, which leads right through Lakewood and many other cities. And I think all of those states are, are sanctuary states. So you have all kinds of people running around these states. We don't, we very, very hardly know who they are. We know they commit a lot of crimes. And I see that you have, the way your zoning is going now, it's very likely that you could find yourself living next to a illegal immigrant, which might also be a criminal dealing drugs and the other things that the cartel deals in. And I see that Amazon is even coming out now with a little house. And of course, you know, our government readily supplies all kinds of goodies for illegal immigrants. So take more of a serious look at your school. Make sure that there's measurable progress in math, reading and arithmetic, or math, reading and writing. Thank you very much.
Next, Christina Minetti.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. This is Christina Minetti. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Gary Oak Coalition. And I just thought I would, I would give you a report from the field, so to speak. A few days ago, I noticed on my way from my parents' house, which is over by the old library to my house, that there was a tree or it, it didn't even look like a tree. It was completely covered with ivy, but it had come, it had started to bend over the road, which was Brook, Brook Lane. It's the one that goes down toward Lake Stillicum, where the creek goes into the lake. And I thought, hmm. And I don't, I didn't even really know it was a tree because there was so much ivy on it. I thought maybe it's just a bush because they have some laurel bushes there as well. And so the next thing I knew, logically, they cut off the branch that was hanging over the road. And I thought that would be it. But, and, and then I saw that it was actually a Gary Oak that had been covered with ivy. And then yesterday, I discovered that they actually cut down the Gary Oak because it had been compromised. It had been pulled down by the weight of the ivy. And it was a massive amount of ivy. And so obviously, this was pretty disturbing, right? So I went over and I measured it. It was 14 inches, which means it's definitely, it was over 100 years old. There were other oaks on the property, some of them, they got the, the ivy off when the, the arborist or whoever was taking down the tree. And so I just wanted to let you know, because I think in the new tree code amendments, there wasn't any, any specific mention of it being prohibited from allow, to allow your tree to be covered with ivy or other invasive vines. This is in other people's codes and probably we could find some examples. But it is tantamount to basically cutting down your own tree, right? I mean, they allowed it to get covered and to fall down. It could also die from being smothered. So I think that what you need to do is have people, have the city give notice to people when it's reported that, that there are trees covered with ivy. They have to follow up. And if anything happens to that tree, there should be a fine as if they had cut it down, you know, illegally without a permit. Because you have as your goal, a 40% canopy cover. And, you know, very often, I don't want to say every day, but we are losing a lot of trees. And there are a lot of trees covered with ivy in Lakewood. And so if we could get on that and try to make it safer for, for trees in Lakewood, that would be really great. And let me know how I can help. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you, next. I don't see any other hands raised. Madam Clerk, do you?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Well, seeing no other virtual hands raised, we've now gone through the list. I'll declare a public comment period closed. Turn to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of January 16th, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council's special meeting of January 22nd, 2024. C, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of January 22nd, 2024. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $5,943,245.44 for the period of December 16th, 2023 through January 12th, 2024. E, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $3,230,757.63 for the period of December 16th, 2023 through January 15th, 2024. F, motion number 2024-09, authorizing the execution of an agreement with KP Palmus, Inc. in the amount of $532,715.68 for design services related to the 100th Street Southwest Project. G, motion number 2024-10, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Parametrics, Inc. in the amount of $353,115.11 for design services related to the Military Road Project. H, motion number 2024-11, authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, for the period of January 1, 2024 through December 31st, 2027. I, motion number 2024-12, authorizing the execution of an agreement with EDX Exhibits in the amount of $67,617 for the Nisqually Partnership Project Design Services. J, motion number 2024-13, authorizing the execution of an agreement with AHBL, Inc. for Planning and Development Engineering Review Services. K, resolution number 2024-04, setting a public hearing on March 4th, 2024 to consider the vacation of the 20-foot wide alley abutting lots 1 through 14, block 69, Town Flat of Lakeview. L, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, planning commission meeting minutes of December 6, 2023. And two, planning commission meeting minutes of January 3rd, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make motion to remove item number, motion number 2024-12.
Very good, any others? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item I? So moved?
Agreed.
It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Councilmember Branstadter, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented minus item I. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda as presented minus I? Signify by saying I.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda minus item I has been adopted. We now move to motion 2024-12, Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2024-12, authorizing the execution of an agreement with EDX Exhibits in the amount of $67,617 for the Nisqually Partnership Project Design Services. We have Mary Dodsworth, Parks Director.
Very good, so before we have a motion to adopt 2024-12, I'll have Ms. Dodsworth provide an overview on this particular item.
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, City Council members. So we've been working on our partnership project with the Nisqually Tribe for the last several years. And we've been making great progress on that project. We received a legislative allocation, which results in a Department of Commerce grant. And so we're working through the process of developing the exhibits, which would be the educational elements along the Nisqually Loop Trail. It's, there's kind of two pieces to it. One is also there's the idea of doing some public art associated with it. And so we're having those conversations. So the EDX contract is primarily to work on the exhibit elements. And I did put a presentation in there and happy to provide an update. I'd be really excited to provide you with an update, especially our newer council members, to give you an overview of that project. EDX would be working on not the art piece. You know, we all know public art is very, can be, you know, its own thing. And so we are, and I can talk a little bit about how we might be approaching that. We're still working through those processes. But EDX has been working with the Nisqually Tribe for the last several years on the Nisqually State Park Project, which is a large state park up by Eatonville. And so they have done tons of research, tons of, had lots and lots of conversations with the Nisqually Tribe. So we're really going to benefit from all of that work. As we know, getting it right is important. The relationship building is paramount to this project. And so we're real excited to work with them. And the Nisqually Tribe is excited that we're working with them as well. So I think we're going to get a good bang for our buck. Love a two for one.
Very good. Well, it's going to be fabulous, but for the new members' benefit, any questions? Ms. Dodsworth, the packet was pretty thorough for tonight's item.
Shall I run through this presentation, the PowerPoint, so we can give you enough.
You can, we might as well, right? And then Ms. Branstadter had a question, but we'll let her run through the presentation first.
Presentation first, okay. I'll just, anyway, so we've been, like I said, we've been working on this partnership project for quite some time. Just to start off with, this is the territorial map of the Medicine Creek Treaty. And just to show that, this is a quote from one of our work programs, is that Fort Stillicum is a crossroads for the Nisqually people, a single location that connected our homelands and shaped our history. You can see where it lies within the seated area or what they call the territory map for the Nisqually Tribe. So the idea is that we'll have eight different exhibit areas along the trail. And they'll be in various fashions. We have, we're working, you know, we're contracting now to design those. But the idea is to not just have a book on a stick, as Councilmember Anderson said. I just love that phrase, I've used it many times. It's to really have some kind of interactive, 3D-ish type of experience and not just have, again, a sign on a stick. So I'll just walk through, starting at Station 1 or Stop 1. And that would be at the restroom building that's by, by the Wahoop Lake parking lot area by the dog park. So the first one would be a kiosk. As you can see, we have that kiosk here. This is not what it will look like, this is a mock-up. But the idea is to really, I kind of welcome and also identify the Nisqually tribe as our partnership tribe and provide a little bit more about, as a introduction to people that might not be aware of that, who visit the park. Item two is near the dog park. And so the idea of doing an exhibit that works with the, the Salish woolly dogs, as you can see, they were, it's an extinct animal now, but it was a very important, they didn't raise goats and sheep and things like that. They utilized the fur to, for textiles, clothing, blankets and things like that. So the idea is, that's a very intriguing topic. You know, people that go to the dog park are going to be very interested. And so the idea too is maybe, besides having some photos and information on the woolly dog, is to also maybe have like a silhouette, those metal cutouts that would be a silhouette that could provide again, that, something that would catch your interest and be of interest to folks. The other thing, side note, when we built the restroom building there, it's got symmetrical sort of sides on front and back. And the idea is at some point to either you could do a mural or you could actually like enclosed in plexiglass, it could be a replica or someplace, like maybe even the material that was created with the, the dyes or the patterns. And that could be. And that could be again another connection to uh for animal lovers who are going to the dog park to again connect with the tribe. So, little side note.
That sounds great.
Stop number three would be um the area where it's talking about the prairies and camas. Nisqually is really means the people of the grass, the people of the water. And so we are lucky to have prairie and grass along this route. We're really fortunate that we have a large camas area there. And when we've taken, I've done several, several tours with various folks. Uh, when the camas has been in bloom and the reaction to the the um Nisqually people is amazing. Camas was very important as a food source. It's still very important so um ceremonially. And so they're just so excited to see that. And so the idea is at this location to have maybe an area identified so when it is in bloom, you really know it's there. When it's not in bloom, you don't know it's there. So how might we incorporate art? Or again, maybe some of those little silhouettes with some educational information so that people recognize what camas means. It's part of the Lily family, but it's really important to the tribe. Uh, down here on the uh south end of Angle Lane is where we have another kiosk. It's shaped the same way as the front kiosk. And again, we're not exactly sure what the um, what the new sign will be on the backside of that. But it will be um either more information on this loop exhibit so that people coming to the backside can see, you know, where to go. Um, and primarily focusing also on the Chief Lushai legacy. Which leads us to the area number five, which initially during our conversations at the beginning of this project was that there would be maybe a significant piece of artwork in this area. This is sort of our Chief Lushai area. We have the Discovery Trail Program. We've had it there for about fifteen years. And this area was identified as the Chief Lushai area way back then. We knew it was an important story to tell. We knew we wanted to recognize it here at the park. So this is sort of our Chief Lushai area. So the idea is, is that this could be an area where there's either a welcome figure, maybe in the rain garden or even just beyond there. Uh, there's a nice open area that you could do some kind of uh artistic uh public art sculpture or something. And so just knowing that could take a really long time working with the tribe to come to some kind of um element. We're working on that now. That's been the process and it'll be a big focus in our February meeting. Um, that we may just incorporate art throughout the project instead of one special thing. And maybe we come back to that as we work through this. The other thing I'm not super crazy about is that you don't have the kind of natural surveillance in this particular area that you might have in other areas. So the idea is we want to make sure if we put something in a location that it'll be taken care of. So we're, we're considering all of those things. And then depending on budget and time and how things work, again, these two items, four and five, may be combined because Chief Lushai's legacy is really important. And so whether it's independent of the kiosk or a part of the kiosk, we're working on that with um our focus group. Which are, I'll keep going. Uh, the next thing is the six. You can see that right here at the end, you go from that parking lot. It's a natural, the trail wise and kind of does this loop. So the idea is that we could maybe use one side, maybe use both trails to talk about the native plants and the resources in the area. There's some significant um plant material and trees as well as on the um the upper part of the loop. You can really see, you can see the backside of the camas. So again, it's kind of recognizing that as well as the oak savanna that we have out there, which is also very important to the tribe. And then um, location number seven, that's when you come out from that part of the area and you're right there on the trail along the Wahop Lake. And again, people of the water. So again, this would be a location, it's really wide open and it's a perfect location to put not just about the history of the Nisqually Tribe, but they're an active thriving tribe. And we want to recognize that and their resilience. And so this is an area where we would be working with them. Um, you can see that's right along that trail that heads back towards where the picnic shelter is. But the other thing here is you could, um, we, they talked at our last meeting about, you know, the canoe journeys are really important way that the tribes all across the state gather once a year. And different tribes host it, but they, they do these canoe journeys from here to there, whatever that may be, all the way from Canada to um up north. And so um the canoe, they talked about having a canoe or maybe us putting a canoe out there right in that area on the grass that could be, you know, that would be appropriate in a public setting for kids to play on, learn about. And it could be really a cool way of recognizing their culture. As well as, these are fish that um one of the tribal members created. This is actually on Capital Lake, but we thought how cool that would be to put that out maybe in the water. Again, that three D effect, you come out, you see the canoe, you have that fish out in the water and then you learn about Nisqually, you know, how important that is to their um current, their history as well as current day. And then we loop back up to um station number eight, which is going to be our Tensler Log. Spelled that wrong, but uh the Tensler Log, which is the location that's been selected. And again, um that's just a little bit of information that we have, which I think you're familiar with. We're working right now on getting that located and permitted so we can build the structure to support it. And um, again, oh, just to go back, is the focus for this um site would be information on the Medicine Creek Treaty. And we have, you know, there's this big log of history of time. And so to really talk about the indigenous history that belongs on that log for that period of time. So I think it's going to be a really cool addition. Uh, and then you can see here the outline of the loop. It's about a mile long. And uh we're going to be focusing on the history of the tribe as well as the current day and future. Um, just information to develop that partnership along the way. So do you have any questions?
Mr. Branstad and then councilmember Bell.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And, and thank you, Ms. Dodsworth. I, I appreciate the, the progress that's been made on, on, on bringing this. It's about to be able to go and do that. I, I just had a uh, a question about on the portion of the trail that goes from the item four to item seven, uh five and six through that loop there to be able to do that. That it's uh, the, the other parts of the trail are all ADA uh accessible, usable. Uh, are we going to do something to increase the ADA usage of that section so that the entire loop will have ADA capabilities? And do we, have we, have we got the money for that set aside yet?
Um, whatever we do for this project would be built within the budget. Um, we have a budget. If it's, goes over that budget, we would talk with the tribe about contributing. However, we believe we can do just what you said. Great point. The rest of the trails are all paved and so they're quite flat and accessible. Um, this is the one area that isn't. And so we have had that conversation about how to make that uh either um compacted with material that would meet ADA um accessibility needs or possibly to do um some kind of uh paving through there just to make that one route. Again, identifying the route as well as making it ADA accessible. So that'll be considered during this uh development phase. We haven't quite got to the cost estimate phase of it, but we'll be working on that in the next several months.
Okay, and, and, and just generally, what parts of this do you think will be done in a near term timeline, meaning this year? And what parts of this do you think will have to move on into twenty twenty five?
Uh, um, the project is, is due to be completed around June of twenty twenty five. So we'll be doing it um all in one fell swoop, so to speak. We'll be looking at getting, the themes have been selected. You heard the themes tonight. Uh, we'll be working on identification of how the elements may look, the different themed elements may look. And then we'll be putting out a bid to get them fabricated. So the idea is to be doing it all at one time, not to do one exhibit, then one exhibit, then one exhibit. I mean, they'll get installed that way, but the idea is to work in progress with the entire project being completed around uh June of twenty twenty five. That's our goal.
And then in terms of cutting a ribbon or officially opening the, the, the loop, have the Nisquallys identified a date that's of significance to them during the year that we might be planning against?
They, they haven't done that yet. We're not quite to that place. We keep having celebration June twenty twenty five on all of our work programs and, and such. However, um, we, July and August are really um busy for the tribes with the various activities and celebrations that they have. So the idea is, is probably trying to, if we can get them all installed, to do something in June. Um, and then if not, maybe early fall because um just of the, their schedule. So we'll be working with them as we get through here, finding out about fabrication of elements uh and what that takes. But um, so we're sort of looking at June right now. I mean, if we got done earlier in May, there could be a significant, but we'll keep council in the loop on that. The idea is, is if you went on the um Chief Lushai Memorial Walk that we had last year, you know, we came from Oak Brook and came into the park. And right by where the restroom is, right where the opening kiosk is going to be, there's that big open space there. And so the idea is it's a perfect place to have a celebration. And so they will, I'm sure, come out in full force to help us honor this important partnership and to recognize the respect that we've given to their legacy.
Okay, and then my, my, my last comment is that, that, that we, the council, we have a, a s- a statement, a land acknowledgement statement. Um, is that going to be a, a, a copy of that be displayed or acknowledged somewhere along this route? Is that in the plan?
Yes, it should, it'll probably be on this welcome kiosk. If you can, this is, this is um a mock-up. This was just something that we used from the very beginning to show them that we wanted something on here that talked about introducing people. And so, but the bottom of here, it has council's um statement. And that we'll be including that probably on this kiosk, maybe on both.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Hello, thank you. So the, I just had a question regarding your exhibits. Love the themes. I think that that's great. And I know that all of this is still being worked on. Has there been any talk about looking at some apps that could be integrated that would give an augmented reality on some of the pieces just to add some more dimension? Or maybe it's just audio that could be heard in multiple languages? Are there some options like that? But I've been to recently a park, it's a space themed park and it has augmented reality. So you can go on the Land Rover, you can stand and all this stuff. And you download the app and you're able to hold it up and you can see a full spaceship flying in the air. And you hear about, more about the park, more about the, you know, all the different pieces and parts there. So it adds that extra layer that you were talking about. So I was wondering if we have explored that or even brought it up or have started looking at anything with some application development?
Uh, the answer is yes, 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 and yes. Um, we um have been working, we've been talking about the whole time about that. Um, and looking at this with the Nisqually Tribe, not as just a one and done, but as the start of a long-term relationship and friendship. We have talked with, we plan to include Leshutzi language in all of the exhibits so that we're providing that historical um piece to it and to bring that, keep that language alive. We've talked about things like QR codes and other ways that people can hear how the words are pronounced. We've talked about having things like um where like say at the camas thing that you could have someone telling a story um utilizing, they do have, um, they've done this oral history with some of their elders and so capturing some of that. And so a lot of those things have been discussed. EDX is an exhibit company out of Seattle. They create exhibits um all over the country. And so we're definitely pursuing that and to see how we can integrate those things from a tactile perspective, from a view perspective, from an interactive perspective as well as um the audio or the visual. I haven't heard so much about the augmented reality. One of the things that we talked about doing initially was even like where the camas is, is that you can have some, almost like a plexiglass panel where you can see through it and you can kind of get this experience of people out gathering the camas. But I think we're going to look at a little bit different than that. But, but I'll, I'll find out. I hadn't really thought about that. But yeah, we do have the um, uh, what's it called? The Ranger Program out there. I can't remember. But you know, we have the app that we have out there that we do activities, there's scavenger hunts, there's things that we um kids can go and do. I don't know if any of you've done those out there. But that's another way that you can connect to the activities that are there. And it, you can play games while you're out there and do some different activities. So those are some other things that we can do to make it more interactive. So it really does encourage folks to come. And then one of the other ideas as well is that um schoolchildren all learn about, you know, Washington State history and indigenous people. I'm not sure which grade it is, but maybe someone from the school district could tell me. I think it's, might be fifth grade, might be fourth grade. But anyway, the idea is that the native um Hanford and, and people from the tribe are out there going to the classrooms and telling stories and talking about these uh about their history and the experiences. So this would be a great way for them to learn in school and then find out, oh, I can come and learn, I can come and do the loop uh either as a classroom, but also as a family um to learn more about it. So um, it's really a great way that there's just going to be many interesting elements to continue that educational piece to it. And uh getting this as the foundation and then where it goes from there. We'll keep working on that.
Councilmember Pearson.
Um, yeah, I really liked the presentation and um, you know, your guys' vision here. I think it's great. Uh, I had one question on the, the Tensler Log. I- is that going to be, um, I know your mock-up is just what it is, a mock-up. But is there, is that going to be open as in, you know, people can get close to it? Or is it going to be, you know, behind like windows the whole time and kind of sealed off? Um, you know, it wasn't a public place, but you know, during certain hours, it's public, right? And so I just wouldn't want to have anything happen to it when it's out after hours and things like that.
Correct. Um, it's always been behind glass. It's always been behind something. And so the idea is, is that it would be in the shelter type structure, won't be behind glass, but some kind of mesh to keep people a bit of a distance that a probably spray can couldn't get to it. But we are talking about resealing it in a fashion that if someone was to try and do something naughty, um, that we would be able to, to come back and uh maintain it or, or repair it. Um, it's, it's pretty big, significant thing. We don't really have a lot of problems at Fort Stillicum with those kinds of activities. So hopefully it wouldn't um generate that kind of nonsense, but um we do our best. But yeah, but the, the idea is having it in that shelter structure to have it a far enough distance so you can still see it and experience it without being able to carve on it or do something, set it on fire or something like that.
Carve on it. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? I think it sounds fabulous.
Good, thank you.
I especially love the opportunity for the connection with Clover Park Youth and history and tactile stuff that they can do.
Yeah, there's a million ideas and so really kind of narrowing it down, but we're really excited about this project. I think it's just going to be fantastic and just such a, a wonderful way to um honor the people that have been here for ten thousand plus years, so.
I was in Alaska in fifth grade. I lived up there and we actually had to have, we had a a module on Native American culture. The Tlingit uh, you know, folks were very prevalent in that area. And we actually carved little totem things and learned what the colorations meant. And you know, it was really a great experience and memorable to this day because I was only, you know, eleven or whatever at the time. So it's a great opportunity for the kids in the district to really understand and appreciate the culture.
We're also working with the youth program, with the Nisqually Youth Program. And they've talked about, um, well, they had the big idea of carving ten benches last summer. I said, that's probably not going to happen, but maybe we could work on one. But also um, um, bringing those kinds of activities to the park. One of the pop-ups at the farmer's market, we're going to be working with the Nisqually um tribe artists where they would take over the shelter and
Right.
and do that for one of our markets. So we're really trying to, again, continue that development of the friendship. That's, that's what I see. Besides this, this is fantastic. I'm super excited about it. Just continuing that relationship building between the city and the tribe because it is so important. And um, so anyway, this is just a first step and many steps in the future.
Well, it's a great one and exciting certainly for all of us. So thank you for the presentation tonight.
Thank you. Happy to share.
So with that, do I have a motion to approve motion twenty twenty four dash twelve? Been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councilmember Laura Sella that we adopt motion twenty twenty four dash twelve. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion twenty twenty four dash twelve has been adopted, uh certainly with great pleasure. So we look forward to that. We now turn to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk? We now turn to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk. Ordinances.
Ordinance number seven ninety-six, granting a five-year non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Zayo Group LLC, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. And to give us an overview, we have our assistant to the city manager, Michael Vargas. Just a little bit of a
Yeah.
context for this particular motion, or ordinance rather.
Of course. So good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, council members. Michael Vargas here to review the uh, Zayo franchise agreement for you tonight. Uh, to give a bit of background, uh, the Zayo Group is a private telecommunications infrastructure company. And that infrastructure um, part is very critical. Um, if you were to think of the entire supply chain of telecommunications services such as internet, phone, TV, um, Zayo is the, is an intermediary. They provide the infrastructure, the actual fiber optic, fiber optic cables to internet service providers like Comcast and Century Link, who then in turn provide the actual um, services such as phone, TV and internet to end users. Um, so a Lakewood customer would never actually receive a Zayo Group bill in the mail because they get their um, services from Comcast and Century Link. And the Zayo Group, their customers, if you will, are Comcast and Century Link, the actual service providers. That's a very key distinction to make here. Um, so the original uh, franchise agreement between the city and Zayo Group was entered in February sixth, twenty thirteen. It's now been ten years. We've used up the initial term plus the rollover. Um, and so we have negotiated a new franchise agreement uh, for review tonight. Um, so to go over these substantive changes, I'm looking on page three thirty-six of your packet tonight. The agenda bill here. Um, most of the clauses and sections of the franchise agreement remain the same from the one ten years ago, except for two. And I'll discuss those now. So looking at section nine, um, specifically subsection nine point one, we have the relocation of facilities. Um, essentially this clause, this new clause says that when the city is completing a public works project um, and ha- and will indeed have to move um, some fiber optic cables, that um, within thirty days of notification from the city, the Zayo Group is, is now, um, will now have to do that. Um, move their facilities within thirty days. Um, and that's pretty standard. We see that across a lot of telecommunications franchise agreements, including Comcast. And um, over the years, um, you know, our Public Works Engineering Department has worked with Zayo. And they are pretty good at moving with, moving their facilities within that thirty days anyway. But this clause is really just to memorialize a industry standard um, with our current franchise agreement. And then the next substantive change would be section nineteen, the franchise term. So we are now proposing having an initial five-year term with up to three automatic five-year extensions. And the city and the Zayo Group, um, either one of us may propose not to have an automatic rollover. Perhaps there's something that came up within those five years that we would like to address, open up the franchise. Um, so essentially we have a potential total of up to twenty years with the proposed franchise agreement here. Um, that's for efficiency sake. Um, other sort of twenty-year, potential twenty-year term franchise agreements we have include waste connections and liquid water districts. So this is really just standardizing our, our franchise terms across all the ones we have here at the city. And with that, that concludes my presentation of the substantive changes and I welcome any questions from the council.
Sure. Uh, councilmember Bell.
Thank you. So just to confirm that the city has two cable franchise agreements, one with Century Link and one with Comcast?
Uh, councilmember Bell, we actually have more than that. Um, I count one, two, three, four, five other um, franchise agreements with internet service providers. So that would be Astound, Integra Telecom, Century Link, Rainier Connect and Comcast. So those folks provide what you would, you know, think of as, you know, your internet and phone and TV. Um, but Zayo does not. They just provide them wires to which provide end users with services. Yep.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm presuming, and I'll let councilmember Laura Sella answer or ask the next one. But just presume we've had a good experience with Zayo Group over the years, leading up to this renegotiated franchise agreement?
Agreed. Public Works Engineering, they worked closely with them over the years. Um, so not too much came up in terms of what we would like to add or change in the franchise agreement. So we landed on these two pretty standard changes. Yep.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Vargas. Uh, I might understand that uh, Zayo Group continues to own these lines and they lease usage to the telecommunications companies essentially?
That is correct. Yep. They provide the infrastructure. Yep.
Councilmember Bell and then councilmember Pearson.
Thank you. So one more question. This is just out of curiosity. Has Google Fiber come calling yet? No? Okay. They are everywhere else. So that's why I wondered. Okay, thank you.
Will they call over a landline or?
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Mayor. Um, is section nine, what was the, the timeframe under the old franchise agreement? This is being changed to thirty days. What was the old timeframe?
Yeah, councilmember Pearson, there was no timeframe beforehand.
It, is this one of the rea- or was this one of the utilities that uh, held up the pole getting removed at the intersection of Veterans and Gravely Lake on that project? No? Okay.
No, Zayo Group doesn't own any poles.
Okay, just wire.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Right, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Okay, in the absence of any further questions or comments, I'll take a motion to adopt ordinance number seven nine six.
So moved. Somebody else?
Okay, I've got a motion by councilmember Bell, a second uh, by councilmember Laura Sella. As I'm pulling teeth up here. Exactly. Any further discussion? All those in favor of ordinance seven nine six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We now turn to unfinished and or new business. Mr. Cawfield, anything?
There's no unfinished business and there's no new business this evening, Mayor.
Very good. And the floor is yours for the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Uh, Mayor, deputy mayor and councilmembers, uh, just a few updates for you. So on the legislative front, the first deadline, actually two deadlines have come and passed. The policy committee deadline was uh, last week on January thirty-one. And today they had fiscal committee deadline on February fifth. Um, so there's uh, so, some bills are still moving forward. We're still keeping focused on a handful of public safety bills that hopefully will be helpful and will make it across the finish line. In addition, we continue to play defense on a couple of others, particularly in the area of housing and tax increment financing. Though that latter issue, um, pleased to report that because of AWC, um, any changes that are going to come forward with TIF are going to be very, very minor. Um, as of this morning anyways. So uh, but that's something that we're keeping a very close eye on and that we're actively engaged in. A couple of other updates uh, here back in town. Uh, tomorrow evening, your uh, Parks Recreation Advisory Board is going to be hosting a public meeting to look at conceptual ideas as it relates to Edgewater Park. And uh, this is a follow-up from previous meetings that have occurred, uh, not just in recent memory, but going back actually back to two thousand nineteen and the like. Um, once P Rab um, hosts this meeting on um, tomorrow evening, they will then take all of that feedback and input. They will then uh, make a recommendation to this body, which will come forward as part of a April study session. Um, and then the goal is for council ultimately to adopt um, a master plan in the April, early May timeline, along with a resolution for us then to be able to move forward with applying for state grants through RCO as we do every two years for major park improvement. So that's kind of the timeline. And actually that is right on task with uh, what we had presented to you, if you recall, back in the September, October timeframe. So your P Rab is moving things along. And um, again, they have time, they have two months to kind of finalize out what they want to recommend to the council based on the, again, the community feedback and input that they'll be facilitating. Um, along those lines, um, our Community and Economic Development Department, led by our Strategic Planning Manager Tiffany Spear, hosted a second community meeting regarding um, com- uh, major, major updates to our comprehensive plan. And uh, had uh, uh, at least thirty-two people plus some walk-ins attend that meeting. That was um, a couple of weeks ago on a Tuesday evening, January twenty-third over at the pavilion um, down at Fort Stilliken Park and then also twenty-three people online. Uh, overall residents, residents pretty much across the board were adamantly against um, what is being mandated to us by the state. There was a couple of local developers there. They were um, supportive of it. Um, because it kind of reduces uh, what they have to do in terms of uh, building requirements and things like that and upzoning and the like. But just wanted to share that with you. Um, looking at uh, um, having a third meeting on uh, February twenty-eighth over at Clover Park Technical College at the Rotunda. And then we'd be looking to have a fourth meeting somewhere in the March-April timeframe. We'd like to do it over in the vicinity of the International District to ensure that we reach out to that community as well. So. Um, also, uh, the Marine Howe, Marine Howard Homeless Shelter, the emergency shelter located at the uh, former Candlewood Suites is expected to open here in the very near future. Um, if you know that uh, building, the business Candlewood Suites was bought out sometime last year by Lehigh. And so they're moving forward with um, opening that as an emergency shelter. So uh, uh, we are also keeping a close eye on that from a public safety standpoint. So LPD will be proactively um, kind of patrolling that area, making sure that um, everybody is safe. So. Um, also, uh, major changes to uh, the building code. Uh, coming up, um, the building code, the electric code, the property maintenance code. Um, as directed by the state building code council or the SBCC, which serves um, essentially on behalf of the state legislature and the governor, um, as it relates to code changes. Um, if you recall, the code was actually supposed to have an effective date back in two thousand twenty-three. But then it got moved to October, actually it was like May of twenty-three, and then it got moved to October of twenty-three. It then was subsequently moved to March fifteenth of this year, which is a month and a half away. We will be bringing forward that ordinance to adopt that code. Um, you, you can make it more restrictive, you can't make it less restrictive uh, for your consideration as part of your March fourth uh, regular, regular council meeting. Um, one of the big um, updates that's included in there, that's causing um, all kinds of consultation with the development community, even though quite frankly, their interests are well represented on the SBCC, is the energy code and the requirements um, that builders and developers are going to have to incorporate into um, uh, new, 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 new development. And so um, there is a lot of uh, kind of unknown there, unknowns there within the development community. But again, um, the city, our hands are tied. It's something that we're mandated uh, to ensure gets um, gets implemented. And then a bit of a surprise, as you know, I do not like surprises. I don't like any surprise. I don't like bad surprises. Actually, I don't even like good surprises. And um, one of the things we learned a couple of weeks ago, about a week and a half ago, is that, and this doesn't, and it's probably because it only pertains to I, 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 a, a number of, not, not a large number of cities. Um, but it includes a new wildfire urban interface component, which means if you're in an area as determined by the State Department of Natural Resources that is um, potentially subject to a wildfire, you're going to have to have increased code requirements. And um, the way I'll just explain it to you is the west side of our city is potentially going to have to comply with this. So for example, if somebody comes in and wants to put on a new roof, the roof is going to have to be constructed to a much higher standard as it relates to preventative um, incidents against wildfire, which is probably going to result in a twenty, thirty percent increase in cost. Uh, for new development, um, it's going to require all kinds of um, increased costs as it relates to mitigating that. Including apparently cities are now going to be required to um, have, as, as it relates to new development, whether it's housing or commercial, vegetation management plan. So we're going to have to review that in terms of where people plant their azaleas and things along those lines. Um, I'm probably a little over-exaggerating there, but that's the way it's being interpreted by our staff right now. There's a lot of questions on that. And what we are hopeful for is that the SBCC actually maybe perhaps moves that down the road a little bit. Because we still don't even know where specifically in Lakewood it's going to be in, 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 for, have to be enforced at. And so we're hoping that the SBCC will give those cities um, an opportunity to kind of look into this before we have to implement it on March fourteenth. Um, one city that we do know that is really up in arms, apparently it applies to the majority of their city, is the city of Tumwater. But we know there's other cities out there as, as, as well. But um, again, just wanted to share that with you, that that's um, another item kind of coming down the road as it relates to um, the code. Um, as it relates to your, your calendar, AWC is having its action days um, this Thursday and Friday down in, down in Lacey. Um, um, also this week on Thursday afternoon, the Lakewood Chamber, their general membership meeting, I'm going to be giving a um, state of the city address. Um, and that's over at the Tacoma Country and Golf Club. That's from eleven-thirty to one PM for members. Um, also on February twenty-second, uh, the Boys and Girls Club of uh, the South Puget Sound, which includes of course, our Lakewood's Boys and Girls Club, is going to be hosting um, their annual Legacy of Hope event. And that's then downtown Tacoma at the bicentennial um, pavilion. And then on February twenty-seventh, uh, which is a Thursday evening at six PM, um, we're going to have Mayor's Coffee House out at the Fort Stil- Fort Stilliken Park um, pavilion. Um, and then lastly, um, one of the things I would like to ask the council is to hopefully, if you could this evening, confirm that Saturday, March thirtieth, would work as a date for your retreat to develop, to begin to develop goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six um, biennium. I know I talked to several of you and I know there was one council member where the twenty-third didn't work, but I, and I know there was another council member that made a comment to me and I hope it wasn't the thirtieth that didn't work. Um, but I would just ask Mayor if um, the thirtieth would work for the council um, to hu- to, to be able to have that retreat. And then also my recommendation is to uh, bring in a facilitator like the council did a couple of years ago. We used a um, a previous employee who did a wonderful job. Uh, this time around, I'm recommending a gentleman by the name of Michael Pendleton. He comes highly recommended. Um, he currently um, is, is doing council retreats for University Place in Kenmore, had a chance to speak with him. And then just in terms of full disclosure, I remember where, I was a staff person at this time, but I remember him working uh, very closely with the City of Federal Way back in the early nineties on a number of initiatives, including goal setting. And I always found him to be uh, quite frankly, very impressive. Um, I have had a number of conversations with him um, the last few weeks about facilitating your retreat. I do think he would be a good match and um, that's, and that, that would be my recommendation, Mayor. But again, um, step one is to try and identify a date to be able to do that.
Okay, so uh, I'll look around, we'll get consensus on the date. And then I have a request on off-site versus onsite. So any problems with the date of Saturday, the thirtieth of March? Probably eight-thirty-ish to one-ish.
So, so in the past, councilmember Bell, um, kickoff has been um, hopefully eight-thirty. That would be my recommendation. And typically it's gone to one-thirty or even two-thirty. I, yep, so.
So it looks like we're okay for the date.
Okay.
I, I really would prefer we get away from the cramped space we've had here because a lot of times we've had in the conference room upstairs. I know that there's available room like at the Adriatic Grill in Oakbrook, for instance. It's public and open. And they can provide food service or lunch or whatever easily if they're members of the public to feel inclined to show up their space. The Country Club could do that as well, but it might be more conducive to do it at the Adriatic Grill in that space over there. I think that would be a better location than here, just.
So, so Mayor, we can look into that. Um, I, I do need to confer with the city clerk because there are requirements to having the meeting be available
Absolutely.
virtually and such. I don't know how we would pull that off.
Absolutely. That's why I mentioned Adriatic as opposed to the other possible choice.
Okay.
So, okay, that would be uh, good to do. I appreciate that. Any other questions on Mr. Cawfield's report or some of the details? The chamber event is this Thursday. Is that correct?
Affirmative, Mayor.
And that is at the Country Club. Correct? Okay, very good. Okay, well, thank you for that. Appreciate it. And then now we'll turn to council comments. Just be mindful, we do have an executive session following this and I'll mention that in just a few. Uh, Mr. Bokey, if you want to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good.
Um, uh, Planning Commission on um, Wednesday night, this Wednesday, and they're going to take up the uh, increase of the, the change of the boundaries of the, of the um, tax exemption area for multifamily. Friday, last Friday, SHAPE, South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. And so if I may, I'd like to go through, I, I, I did take some notes. Real quickly in their legislative, and I don't know where, where we've landed on this, but in their legislative action, there are changes to the 1406 money, which we keep and we put towards housing rehab. They're, they're supporting a, a, a piece of legislation and I'm looking on their list here to see if it lived or died yet to allow 80% AMI, up to 80% AMI to help homeownership actually. Right now the limit on the 1406 money is I believe 60% of AMI. A good portion of the discussion the other day was about the operating budget and how we should use the budget surplus. And, and I know Councilmember Brandstetter has also been involved in this discussion. So it came, came down and I'm, I don't think I'm going to ask anybody tonight, but there was some support for fee reduction and I can't even remember what our fee is annually. There's also now a SHAPE capital fund. The city of Auburn has put in 15,000, Sumner put in 125, Fife put in 153. And Pierce County has agreed to match that. So it comes up to a little under $600,000. The county will administer it. I don't know that there was much interest in that, I'll be honest. I, I don't know that the other cities, and I don't know where we land on that. It would be one time, I don't know, you know, what project they're aiming for or anything like that. Then there was also member government capacity building and technical assistance. So this gets into trying to help mainly the smaller entities implement some of these measures that we've talked about, of course, and, and we run into this problem at the, at the PCRC too, that some of these cities just do not have that many folks to help them comply with the law or put new, new housing measures into place. And then pre-development services, and I'm, I'm not going to get into that. The things like the developer portal, which is now live, by the way, which is on my other notes. So no real consensus on that. At least one small town mayor said, listen, we're, we're, we're faced with a pretty difficult budget in the coming year. And I think that fee reduction would be a nice measure. Like I say, only four of the entities are involved in the capital. To date, it seems like there's been housing advocacy, member government, capacity building and technical assistance, which they've talked about. And pre-development services like the developer portal and various things like that kind of, that seems to have been up the mission of SHAPE, the advocacy at the legislative level. They're also out doing, help sponsoring these measures, these meetings where the Assessor Treasurer's Office talks about the changes in the senior tax exemption, the senior low income tax exemption, which was several years ago was made much more generous and more, much more expansive, they increased the. And so there's a lot of interest in that. And I know the county put some, some money in towards helping the Assessor Treasurer provide that. And I don't know that they've had a meeting here in Lakewood or not. I don't, I can't remember. So I'll just leave you with that.
That's a lot, thank you. Councilmember Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we chose a good group to receive the proclamation for Black History Month today. I, I think that was going forward and it follows through with, I think, some things that we've done really well. The, the three videos related to the Martin Luther King recognition and celebration were, were, were well done and, 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 and communicated the good messages. And I didn't watch the first Hidden Heroes Duo presentation that I thought was people who were appropriately chosen, but whom I had never heard of before. Okay, and so I went, so, so it was a learning piece to be able to go and do that. And hopefully as the young people talked about that they, they, they really wanted to be more aware of successes of, of, of folks in the various minorities that had moved on to, as a, because they would find that encouraging. Okay, cause I, cause I know from my experience in the college system, and one of the biggest problems that often gets in the way of the success of young people and particularly minorities is people who talk negatively to them about whether they, they, they really can do what they're incapable of. So I think they would, and the folks that have done that with us have done very well. I attended a meeting today this evening, you know, this afternoon of the Chamber Clover Creek Watershed Council. That's an organization that is there and exists with, without a real charter or authority of what they're going to do. And they have, they're trying to get away from just being communicating with that they think there, there are problems in the watershed and trying to look to try to find a way forward where they can be more impactful and actually making improvements to it. They, they, they have a problem in that Wyre 12, which is our watershed, within the state system of watersheds, it's the smallest one. So it has, it, it doesn't have the big problems of floods and, and, and other things to be able to go and do that. But yet there are a lot of people in the community that are concerned about the health of the watershed, both in terms of the quality of the water, the quantity of, of water and the relationship for water resources like wetlands with economic development that goes on. So they're, they're committed to trying over the remainder of this year to try to find a way to make themselves more relevant to being a resource to all the different agencies that perhaps are in the position to influence changes. The Community City Services Advisory Committee did take up at the last meeting our, our ask for them to look at, of, of, of taking a lead role and recommending how opioid funds would be being used. And they, they had a good approach in that they were saying, you know, what we don't, they don't want to just be putting out and saying requests for proposals for people to, to do things because they envisioned that they would just get, people who are already in that business would just have become asking for money to be able to do what they've already been doing. And so they're going to talk about it one more time, but they're, they're leaning towards coming to us with an initial recommendation of actually hiring someone like someone from one of the universities or someone like that to actually do a needs analysis in Lakewood of saying, okay, now how exactly has Lakewood been impacted by the opioid crisis and what actionable areas are there? Cause there's a two-page list of things you could do with the money. But, but they, they, they want to get some data together about really what is it? And how is the opioid crisis impacting Lakewood? And of the, of those impact, which ones are actionable? So rather than moving right into writing contracts for people to do things. And I think that that's the recommendation they're going to give to us when they come back in a couple of months to, to looking to do that. They're, they're, they're at least, we're leaning in that direction to be able to go on. And then on, on Saturday, I did attend the annual Washington Tacoma Korean American Association event that was there. It's, it's always an event with speeches that you politely listen to. But that, that what were meaningful to most of the attendees, that, that good food and entertainment and a establishment, and that organization is primarily made up of business people and people who are in businesses. And it is a good indication of that the Korean American commu, business community is, is, is healthy here in Tacoma and Pierce County, being able to go and do that. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, mayor. I attended the Caring for Kids fundraiser on Saturday and that was a great time. Good to see lots of folks get out. There probably had to have been at least 500 people there or something. You know, helping to raise some money to, you know, really provide some essentials for the youth in our community. On the 25th, I attended the PSRC meeting. And one of the interesting things from there was there was a equity pilot funding provided. And there was a total of eight projects that were applied for, all eight got funded. I guess they had like $8 million thereabouts, a little over. They were a couple hundred thousand dollars short on being able to fully fund all eight projects. So that was voted to try to come up a way to, to finish out the funding on those since there was just a little bit short. Otherwise, all of the projects would have, you know, had 5% off the top or something. So that was, it was interesting that they, you know, there was only eight projects that were applied for. I would have thought that, you know, when people are having money available, it's more competitive, I guess. But yeah, and that's, that's all I have, I'll keep it short, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, mayor. I will make it quick too. I attended the Caring for Kids event and it was fantastic. And it was really nice just to see how much that the community is involved and gives back. And then I will second what Councilmember Brandstetter said about the, a wonderful group was selected to come and hear the proclamation. And I will say that because my daughter is a part of BSU for Harrison Prep and she was here. So that was great to have her be a part of that. So, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the members of Youth Council here who are here tonight. It was great to hear their priorities. We did have a little bit of trouble hearing one of the presenters and I think it might've been a microphone issue. I wasn't sure if we could potentially get a copy of her notes so that we can take action on them. I want to make sure that her voice is heard. I want to thank Mary Dodsworth for sharing the partnership details with the Nisqually Tribe as it relates to the projects at Fort Silicon Park. It's important that we recognize the, the legacy of the first people who were here. So I want to continue to do that. I also want to echo what Councilmembers Brandstetter and, or Pearson and Bell said about the Caring for Kids Charity Dinner and Auction. I was there as well and it was great to see the community turn out and show up to, to help people. And it got me thinking about whether there's an opportunity for us as a council to showcase local nonprofits that are benefiting residents in our community, much like we do our small business showcase. So groups like Rotary or Caring for Kids or others like that, having an opportunity to showcase them to other members of our community and help, help them help our, our folks. So it's a consideration.
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
And then I am attending the Public Safety Advisory Board on Wednesday, representing council and looking forward to the latest and greatest from our police and fire folks. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been a busy week for me. On Friday, I attended the, the Black Student Union event at Lakes High School. And they did the live Tacoma Arts and it was very well done. The students put it on, they had a gentleman in from Seattle. And there was a lady that portrayed Nina, Nina Simone. It was, it was really, really good. But the gentleman that spoke on behalf of Dr. Martin Luther King sounded exactly like him. Everybody was like, had to take a second look at that one because it was very well done, very, very good. I also attended the 62nd Air Lift Wings Social. That was great. It was a small group, but it was good to see some of the other honorary commanders come together for, because we hadn't been together for a while. And on Friday, I attended the award ceremony for the 62nd Air Lift Wing. They had a major general that came, flew in to present the awards to the airmen that had made the accomplishments. That was, was a big deal. They had it in a hang of three. And on Thursday, I will be attending ALS graduation. I haven't been to one for a while and I got called out, so I'll go in. Caring for Kids was again, something that I enjoy always. And you know, when it comes to the kids, I'm all there. I attended the Promise Board meeting and you heard a lot about that tonight from the leaders there. I will be attending the, the Chamber Luncheon to support our manager, city manager. And let's see, and the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition's event is March 15th, 7:00 PM at the McGavick Center. And it is a sit-down dinner. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
I'm sure we'll hear more about that event.
Yes.
As the weeks progress.
Absolutely.
Exactly. Well, it's been a busy week. I attended the Horizons Economic Breakfast that's put on by the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber on Wednesday. I was an attendee there with Pierce Transit's membership. And the bottom line is, you know, Pierce County is, is doing well coming out of the pandemic. They estimate and forecast moderate growth in all areas. So it's, you know, fairly positive, but certainly not hugely bullish, but moderately positive in terms of economic growth for the county. On Thursday, the city clerk arranged a series of meetings for me here at City Hall. The first included a meeting with the mayor of Kewala, Jim Castama. And he wanted to basically come and say they're all in in terms of supporting where we are with regard to public safety initiatives that were, of course, started last summer where we gathered together various cities and towns and that formed a coalition, if you will, that came together, as you know, with a letter, with items that were on our legislative agenda, which we have communicated to our legislators. So he's supportive of that. But he also brought up an issue that his council is interested in looking into. And I mentioned it to Mr. Coffield and as he mentioned tonight, it involves the housing legislation that was passed last year that effectively takes away local control. And in his opinion, it stands to impact desperately middle-class neighborhoods over those that he sees are upper-income neighborhoods that might be gated or subject to CCNRs that are unscathed by the legislation that allows multiple dwelling units on single residential lots. And he's not happy. So he plans to maybe look and see if there's an opportunity for legal action or not. And I wanted to know our appetite for maybe looking into that as well. So I bring that to your attention. Next meeting I had was with the new executive director of the Lakewood Playhouse. He is knocking on all doors just to make sure that he's visible in the community. Wanted to thank us for our support of the playhouse with regard to our lodging tax allocation. He certainly invites us to come and attend and they're going to be more visual, visible about the opportunities for the community to attend the event. And they're working on the mural, which you may They're working on the mural, which you may recall was part and parcel to the lodging tax allocation for marketing purposes. The same artist that did the mural at the Fort Silicon restroom is going to be doing the front face of the the wall facing the community at the Lakewood Playhouse. So more to follow on that, but it was a good conversation. They have a lot of good things going on. The board is energized. He seems fantastic. So that is a longstanding institution here in Lakewood that we all should continue to support. Third conversation with this with the gentleman on with the transportation group that does consulting work and lobbying work for transit agencies, and he just wanted to hear from us what our concerns and needs were. And I talked to him about the Penning Sound Transit investment, some 35, 40 million dollars plus in Lakewood, which is a positive. I told him if he wants to establish an opportunity to address low-hanging fruit, he should talk to Washdut about cleaning up their highways and byways on the shoulders leading into the fair city of Lakewood. So he said, oh, good idea. I'll take that back. We'll see. Rotary on Friday was an interesting meeting with a gentleman who's head of the Business Development Group for the Seattle Sounders. And I didn't know, but you folks who are more sports oriented probably do know that the World Cup Games are coming to Seattle in 2026. It's going to be a huge opportunity that will drive economic activity all the way south to Lakewood, kind of like the big golf event did. So more to follow on that as we get forward to the date. But I'm sure we'll want to spiff up our highways and byways as best we can to make sure it looks good. I asked whether or not they've got an inroad with the city of Seattle to clean up all the graffiti along the roads. So maybe that prompted the recent legislation or court decision that said that they now can prosecute misdemeanor crimes for graffiti in Seattle. We'll see. Saturday, Caring for Kids, I attended. Great event. Appreciated seeing many of you there. So we continue to do good things to support kids in the community. And that is this week. So it's been busy and more to follow for sure. So now we will recess into executive session for about 15 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101 sub I to discuss with our legal counsel litigation or potential litigation. We are not expected to take any action following that session other than to simply adjourn this meeting. So for now, we will be in recess. Thank you.